Flag scoop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which is in peace, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. It's organized here. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona-Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tap into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grandi.
Here.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mr. Ballack.
Here.
Mrs. Keegan.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here. This time I open this portion of the meeting to public comment. I see that we don't have, uh... Nope, nothing for agenda items only, so I close that section. And we do have a presentation tonight, but before we get to the presentation, we're gonna jump around and we're gonna let our student representative, Mr. Kelly, speak so that he doesn't have to say if he chooses not to.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Yes, please do.
Good evening to everyone here and everyone watching at home. Just a few quick little announcements from the high school, you know, monthly, like we do. First and foremost, we have the Matilda Show coming up. I know that the cast members are gonna be coming to the middle school tomorrow to give like a little presentation to the middle schoolers about it, get them excited, so that'll be happening tomorrow, I believe. I think that field trip officially got approved. Next thing we have coming up is, of course, Lip Sync, March 7th, that's scheduled for. It might get pushed back a little bit, a week or two, there are current meetings going on with that to see if that'll happen. The sophomores may or may not be dropping out, so we have to have a meeting with their class as a whole and tell them to like, you know, get on board, it'll be fun, so if anything, it'll be pushed back a week or two, but right now, it's gonna be officially scheduled for March 7th, and the tickets are online, so you can buy that there. Same thing with the show Matilda, you can go online and buy tickets there in advance. And then the final thing going on at the high school is, of course, we have the St. Patrick's Day little luncheon we're having. So, of course, St. Patrick's Day is March 17th, but actually 13th during lunch of March, we will be having a luncheon, so we're gonna be bringing in traditional Irish food like corned beef and cabbage, Irish soda bread, all that kinda stuff, bring it in. We're gonna be selling tickets at lunch for fundraising, about $5 a student, we're gonna come in, eat as much as you want, and hopefully that'll be good ways to raise some money for the school, but that's about all that's going on at the high school, just, you know, wanna keep everyone here updated and everyone at home watching updated. That's about all on my end, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate the update.
Of course.
And of course, as always, if there's anything we can do to support, please don't hesitate to ask.
Of course.
So, feel free to stay, if you certainly...
I'll be there.
Get home safe, stay dry.
Everybody have a nice day.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to our... We have a presentation tonight, and then we will return to our committee reports and our updates. So we have Mr. Decourt, who will be presenting tonight on the middle school goals. Update us on where we are with the building goals and... I just want you to have a mic so that people at home... Oh, there you go.
It's okay if I move around a little bit?
Yes, whatever you need to do, just carry the mic with you.
So, yes, I'm Nick Decourt, the principal of the middle school. Good evening. I'd like to thank Mr. Grosso, President Dora, our Board of Education members for having me tonight to be able to provide an update on our goals for the middle school this year. Each year, we set goals that are aligned with the district, also to our personal needs based off our population and challenges that we see at the middle school. So tonight is a good opportunity for us to provide an update. So just to reacquaint ourselves with our goals, we have to increase student achievement and proficiency based on each grade level's prior performance in mathematics was our first goal. Our second goal was to increase student achievement and proficiency based on each grade level's prior performance in English Language Arts. And then our third goal was to decrease the number of harassment, intimidation, and bullying cases based on a proactive approach to bullying prevention. How are we working towards moving the needle in a positive direction? Our teachers are utilizing data gathered through platforms like Linkit to inform groupings in their classroom to drive instruction. They're placing an emphasis and expectation of differentiated instruction to meet individual needs of our students and exposure to NJSLA-style questioning. I'll look into the approaches and strategies and feedback from our teachers up to this point because it truly is a snapshot in time on how we're doing up to this point. So we'll start with math, our first goal that was listed up there. We have daily foundational skill problems provided in all math classes five days a week, that's how we open our class, with a foundational skill problem. We transition to the Envision Math Series, thank you to our Board of Education for supporting that. In 6th and 7th grade, we're looking forward to moving that into 8th grade for the upcoming year. We have sample NJSLA problems infused through the Edge Elastic program, which is another resource that we have here, to be able to prepare our students for NJSLA-style questioning, to be able to get them comfortable to actually take the test in the spring. We have an after-school math strategies program, and this year we changed the criteria to focus more on assisting students that were on the cusp of proficiency through a standards-based spectrum workbook series, which is gonna focus on hopefully honing in on those foundational skills and getting those students to rise to the mark because they were right on the cusp of getting there, so that's what that program is focusing on after school this year. And then as we get a little bit closer to testing, NJSLA prep work as we approach that time. We have a math intervention class for the first year this year during the school day, and that class is focusing on students that were identified to need more individualized focus, that had a little bit further of a way to grow, but we were able to then meet that need during the school day. Some teacher feedback up to this point on how we've been doing within math. With consistent practice, students have gained confidence in mastering concepts. Students are demonstrating growth, mastery in math-specific skills formerly identified as weaknesses. Sample NJSLA questioning are being incorporated into the daily do-now. And then right from, a quote from our teachers, "We find that we haven't had to lose as much instructional time to reteach and/or review concepts because students are demonstrating mastery, so they don't have to go back and reteach them in class." And then we have a breakdown by grade level. Feedback from specifically our 5th grade, overall Linkit average scores have increased by approximately 25% at this point in the year. 6th grade, our Linkit scores, and you'll notice a theme with Linkit, obviously, because we utilize that as our data warehousing and assessment tool, but we, I'm gonna get later on in the presentation to some other assessment and diagnostic tools that we're utilizing, but you'll see a common theme with Linkit. Linkit scores increased with a combination of the new Envision curriculum as well as daily foundational skill warm-ups. Very few students are not meeting expectations, and many more are meeting. 7th grade, students have become stronger with foundational skills based on more accurate responses to the do-now questioning. We started this approach last year, opening every single math class every day with a foundational skill, because the feedback from the high school was that students were coming in without foundational skills. So we figured we would take that more aggressive approach here to then hopefully prepare our kids as they transition up to the high school. The Envision program has dramatically increased Linkit scores from Form A to Form B in previous years compared to Conquer Math program. There's a lot of positive feedback, and you'll see a common theme also with the Envision program. There's much more of a supplemental approach and a ton, a ton of practice and assistance and guidance for our teachers rather than just the investigative approach with our other series that we no longer will be continuing in those grades. And 8th grade, students have demonstrated an eagerness and enthusiasm to learn. Teachers are looking forward to implementing the Envision series in the 24-25 school year, following the positive feedback that they've received from the 6th and 7th grade teachers as they articulate. Students are demonstrating mastery with concepts being taught. So this feedback came directly from our teachers. And then just to provide a small snapshot on how we've grown, we had a little bit more room to grow in math and language arts, so you can see we're moving the needle in a positive direction. In one of those, it was over 25%, it was in our 5th grade area, but as you can see, they are demonstrating growth and the needle is being moved, so we are headed in a positive direction according to Linkit, according to the mastery that's being demonstrated in the classroom, so hopefully that'll then translate onto NJSLA in the, you know, in the future. Now we'll move over to lang...
I'm sorry, can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
On the math?
Mm-hmm.
I see you have the 7th and 8th grade accelerated. Can you talk very briefly just about some of the strategies that you incorporated in the accelerated programs to move those students? We tend to focus on, you know, the students that are struggling, and clearly we're doing a great job, but can you talk a little bit about that, the accelerated classes, some of the strategies the teachers are using?
Sure, absolutely. So this is the first time they're implementing Envision, right? So as I go in there, they're still working on foundational skills, and the accelerated class is an accelerated pace, and it's going at a deeper breadth to the content, so they're still covering the same content in 7th grade and then 8th grade, but in the accelerated class, they're going deeper and quicker of a pace. You can definitely see the comfortability with the math series. I know that the 7th grade teachers have shared with the 8th grade teachers all of the positive feedback that's coming from this new series, so we're truly hoping it's gonna benefit, you know, the program as they matriculate through. Does that answer?
Is this inclusive of your 8th grade algebra students?
Yep, so we have, so I broke it out between 8th grade and then 8th grade accelerated.
The accelerated is pre-algebra.
Accelerated is algebra. So 7th grade is 7th grade math, 7th grade accelerated is pre-algebra.
Has the 8th grade algebra curriculum now been moved into the direction where it runs concurrent with that at the high school, because that's what it should be? It should be the exact same course they offered at the high school.
So we are headed in that direction, and we're hoping that once we adopt the Envision series...
When do you think we'll be there? When do you think we'll be there?
If we adopt the series in 24-25, that's when we'll be there.
All right, okay, thank you.
Yep. Now we'll move to Language Arts, is that...
Yep.
Move off math into Language Arts?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we have Common Lit, so the, I'm gonna go through some of the platforms and strategies that the teachers are using, and then I'll go into their feedback. So Common Lit is another platform that we're using. Student learning standards are emphasized in the evidence-based questions as well as constructive responses with the MLA citations, so these are all the different strategies that we're implementing to hopefully prepare our students to be able to demonstrate mastery, so then it'll translate onto the NJSLA and hopefully move the needle with our scores. No Red Ink is a diagnostic assessment tool, targeted practice and quizzes on topics related to grammar, sentence structure, and writing, in response to a variety of prompts. And Edge Elastic is what we adopted this past year to mirror the NJSLA-style questioning to get our students used to and comfortable taking those type of questions, the drag-and-drops and the different means of taking that type of assessment, because even if they know the material and they're comfortable with the content, they struggle sometimes with the actual means of taking the test, so this is hopefully gonna help them get a better comfortability with being able to take those style questions. Teacher feedback in Language Arts, students are demonstrating growth via a combination of the below assessment tools that they're utilizing, some of them are repeated, Linkit, Common Lit, student writing anthologies, that's in 7th grade, project-based learning assignments, close reading of literature, and one of the biggest things that we see as a challenge to us in Language Arts is citing textual evidence, so there's an increased emphasis on citing textual evidence to prepare for NJSLA testing. And then broken down by grade, in our 5th grade, some feedback from the teachers, students continue to practice acquiring skills for reading comprehension and writing proficiency through weekly practice, reading and writing stamina continue to grow. In 6th grade, we have seen growth in many of our students on Linkit, some have shown significant growth while others have demonstrated growth at a gradual pace, which is okay, that means we're still moving in a positive direction, and that's where we wanna move. 7th grade, students have become better equipped to read and write through the use of the assessment tools and in-class strategies, and in 8th grade, students continuously practice standards-based assessment questions on No Red Ink, Edge Elastic, and Linkit, which is those common assessment diagnostic tools that we have. Students also work to improve their writing skills, which will be the main focus on the NJSLA. And I think the common theme that I see going through the grades, which a huge emphasis and focus is placed on, is what I had said before with citing textual evidence and being able to comprehend what they're reading and then go back and find those details in the story and be able to then translate that back to answer the types of questions that are being asked on the standardized assessments in the spring. And now, once again, we're moving in a positive direction, it's a snapshot in time, we had less of some room to grow in Language Arts, however, we are moving in a positive direction. And going back to their past performances, some of them were 6% to 8% to grow, and we seem to be on track for that, but it just depends, once they take the NJSLA and, you know, how they'll demonstrate the proficiency on that, but we are moving in the right direction, and I truly feel we're implementing the right approaches to be able to get there. Way back when, when I was in the classroom, I taught 7th grade math, we were a school in need of improvement, we needed to get to safe harbor at the time, and a lot of these strategies now have evolved but are very similar to what we implemented in the classroom at that time to get to safe harbor and be able to get out of a school of need improvement. This was over 15 years ago, so, yes, I'm hating myself, and been here 14 years. So, once again, we wanna celebrate the small victories, we wanna keep moving in the right direction, the goal is to show mastery and understanding of the content, and yes, I know that the scores are supposed to mirror the standards and the standard, the standards are supposed to mirror the curriculum, so that means it should all be working in tandem, so if that truly is the case and we are moving in the right direction, I am looking forward to seeing how they do in the spring and if we see the fruits of the labor that is being put in at this point.
Thank you, should be commended on, I think some people underestimate the true value and the necessity of having a testalizedness and test awareness of students, and the strategies to bring students familiar with questioning techniques that are used on standardized tests is a huge promotional piece to allow our students to do well. A lot of times they'll understand the theory, but the testing strategies they're not familiar with, and thus, you know, in timed assessments, that becomes an issue, so I really commend, you know, that is a great way to approach this.
No, thank you. And this is not me, it's our team, it's, you know, all of the different aspects and planning that are being put in place on a daily basis in the classroom, and the teachers are the ones that are seeing the challenges of the students being able to demonstrate mastery on their assessment, but then they go and give them an assessment such as something that mirrors NJSLA, and they struggle, so that's what tells us that, okay, maybe they're not comfortable in taking those type of questions. So that's why the Edge Elastic, going back to that platform that we have, is so important because it truly mirrors those styles of questioning, and it's gonna hopefully get the kids comfortable in using it. And then we wanna find a fine balance between screen time and not also, so, you know, we're treading through those waters right now. And now moving on to the third goal is a reduction in harassment, intimidation, and bullying, right? So this is a very, very difficult goal. It's extremely difficult to quantify, given it is a family's right, many external factors play into these types of cases. If someone feels the need to be able to contact the school and say, "We need to make a report", we need to listen to them. At the very least, listen to what the problem is and potentially go through an investigation. So that's why at times it could be very, very difficult to reduce or quantify what we're actually doing with it, so we figured, let's take a proactive approach through programming and see if that may reduce the number of cases that we have by improving the culture in the school. So what are some of the programs that we brought in this year already? The Lindsay Meyer Teen Institute, they did a conflict resolution workshop with our 8th grade, there were some struggles last year that we identified within that grade that we were able to, that actually I think were corrected by the students themselves to begin with, and we wanted to just keep that positive momentum, so we still brought the Lindsay Meyer Teen Institute in, and they worked for a two-hour workshop with the entire 8th grade on team-building, communication skills, and conflict resolution, and it was fantastic. We did that about three to four months ago. We brought in Ryan's story, John Haligan, he had spoke here maybe about six years ago, he had lost his son tragically due to a bullying incident. He tells a very, very heartfelt trying story and talks to our students about the importance of seeing something, saying something, understanding the harm to your words and impact, and hopefully some of these programs that we're bringing in, they're definitely relevant, but hopefully they resonate with our kids. Importance of Positive Behavior on Social Media, we had retired Detective Ed Del Fuente come back this year to talk about the importance of proper civility on social media. Anyone knows that has a phone, and when kids have phones, the different choices that they make sometimes are not the most appropriate. They struggle with communication, they struggle with making proper choices, and not understanding the harmful impact that when they do something on social media, that it never goes away, or it is very, very difficult to go away. So by bringing in retired Detective Ed Del Fuente and speaking to our kids about that, hopefully that further affirms the importance of using social media, because they're going to use it, so we should embrace it and use it in a responsible manner. So we're hoping that that was a very good message, and we've seemed to get positive feedback from the students. I don't know when they go home, if they talk to their parents about it, or if they talk about what they've seen, but hopefully even if one time, not one student, but one time, they think before they're going to do something, it might save them from a pretty harmful decision on whatever it may be, whether harming someone else of themselves. So we're hoping, once again, through a proactive approach, that they think about these programs, and we strategically placed them through the year, we've been fortunate to be able to do that this year, to be able to keep this positive momentum going. And then hopefully shifting our culture a bit, that was the purpose of this proactive approach, and we're starting a school slogan contest to help students feel connected to our school. We're hoping that if they can feel connected to the school, they'll feel better about coming to school, and they'll treat each other better, and the culture will be better, and then hopefully it'll have a reduction in some of these incidents, we hope. The school slogan contest is super important to me because I want the students to feel vested in it, we tried, we did a contest, and some of the entries that we got were not really in the direction that we were looking to move, so we've placed it back out to the students, and we're hoping to, we've given them a little more direction, because I could just create the slogan, but I would much prefer our students do that, and then when we can start tailoring our programming in the future related to a proactive approach, related to that slogan, whatever it may be, so that hopefully we can keep a common theme, and hopefully we can have a reduction in bullying incidents. We are trying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Martinelli, do...
Mr. Paul, sorry.
Yeah, it's really not the time...
Oh, sorry.
If you wanna, you know, take it out in the hall...
Oh, yeah.
No disrespect, you know, intended, but, oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Decourt.
You're welcome.
Very much appreciate it, and just so everyone knows, as we move on in the coming months of the following board meetings, each building principal will be presenting on their building goals. I believe the next one is the high school, and so we will hear from the high school principals.
Sorry, I was...
No. I'm sorry for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, so we are gonna move on to some committee reports. We had several meetings this last couple weeks, it's been very busy, so we're gonna, here, I'm gonna let the rest of the board, as always, report on all the committees, and then we'll circle back, so we will start with Ms. Keegan, you're up, you're to my right.
I'm going to...
Just pull your thing closer so people can...
I'm actually gonna pass the finance committee report to Mr. Grandi, who does a good job with that, so...
You want me to go now, or is there anything else?
Did you do your other ones? Are you doing them?
Policy, we have not met to give anything to the public yet, we have something that we're, the updates from Strass Esme that we just got, we're gonna look over them, and we have a meeting scheduled for March that we'll have more updates and information on for March. I didn't write anything. No, we have no update for facilities right now, not at this point, but again, next month, we should have more.
Okay. Mr. Marzullo?
I do not have anything to update on the FSA or the town council.
Mr. Ballack?
As Ms. Dora had indicated, I think it's very important in the area of curriculum instruction, that the principals will be presenting their building goals in the next several months, and it will give you an indication of how we coordinate them with our board goals and Mr. Russell's district goals, and as we start to move forward, I think that's a critical component in unifying the district and getting the district to move in a very positive direction. Also, in the area of curriculum instruction, which I hope will be forthcoming next month, will be a very important approval and adoption of an elementary math series. They've been working on that, about selecting a series for the primary grades and a textbook series and all the residual components that work along with that curriculum, software and so forth, and we should have that shortly to bring forward and prove to the public. Last week on Wednesday, we had a personnel meeting, and the personnel meeting, so Mr. Grosso, myself, and Ms. Dora attended, that meeting was basically what you will be seeing on this evening's agenda, is the business at hand in moving forward with the personnel items that are there, there were several closed item sessions which will be discussing at the close of the meeting in closed session, but thank you very much.
Mr. Grandi?
Okay, on finance, just a couple of, just a couple of points on, quick points on finance. We had a meeting on February 15th, it was CM, myself, and Mr. Vida. Most of the items are already going to be on tonight's agenda, but a couple of things that we also did touch upon at the meeting, we discussed the annual... audit process and the issuance of the audit report. The audit partner was actually supposed to be here tonight.
Correct.
But had a little bit of an emergency. So I think he'll be here next meeting to talk through the process, you know, the results, you know, how we arrived at the results and everything. I think the, you know, not to spoil the surprise, but the, we had a clean opinion for the audit process. I think there was maybe a couple of small recommendations, but nothing material. A clean opinion means that there's no, nothing material to report that came out of the audit. That's good news. And then another thing we spent a little bit of time talking about was the budget. The budget is due, I think, at the end of March. You know, it's going to, it's always a challenging process to do the budget, especially with, you know, the rising costs and then trying to balance everything. But we're working through that and that's a, you know, that's a work in progress, continues to be a work in progress. Those are the two things I want to touch upon for the finance.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next point. I just want to do a quick update on where we are with the superintendent search. So I just want to put out to the community that on our website, on the main page, the opening page, there is a, I want to call it a tab on the top, that outlines the whole process of how we will be moving forward with the superintendent's search. I will say that it, do not access it from your phone because it changes the whole website and it's almost impossible to find, which I learned. So if you go on from a desktop, it is much easier to navigate. But with that being said, I just want to kind of go through it because many people here and at home are aware, but not everybody is. I'm just going to briefly go through the process and where we're at. So as you may know, at the last board meeting, that we did approve to work with New Jersey school boards to work with us during this process. We have then, since then, we have scheduled several information focus sessions, is what we're calling them. And the whole idea behind that is really to access input from all the shareholders, all the stakeholders, everyone's involved. And that ranges from the parents in the community all the way to the students. We have met with, and I'm not going to go through all the dates, but it's already happened. We've met with building administrators, central office administrators, support staff. We've met with students, because student voice is really important to this whole process. We've met with, the board as a whole has met. We've met with the community, an in-person session and a virtual session. We've met at each building so that staff felt comfortable in their own environment. So we met with North End staff, then South End, then the middle school, then high school. And the whole idea is just to start to collect input of what the stakeholders feel are important and start to build a vision and a direction. And then the application process is posted. It's through an online service, newjerseyschooljobs.com, I believe it is. It's also on New Jersey school boards, it's also on our website. And we are collecting applications through March 4th. So as of this afternoon, we currently have 22 applications that have already applied from the guidance that we've been given through school boards. It's not uncommon in the last couple of days to see that number increase. So once the process, the application process closes, which I said was the 4th of March, the Board of Ed will meet with school boards to start to review those applications and then interviews. And then the process is going to start to move really fast. So the week of the March 11th will be interviews for the first round. The week of March 18th would be second round interviews. And then the week of March 12, 25th, I'm sorry, would be final candidate interviews. And then following that becomes the vetting process, background checks, all of that. With a hope to have, you know, somebody hired or to the board sometime in early April with a July 1 start. So that's, you know, the perfect outcome. But I just felt that it was important to use this opportunity to kind of get it out to the community that this is what we've been doing in the process. And we've gotten a lot of really good feedback. I know several of the board members and myself have received emails from community members. You know, we're trying to respond to them as quickly and effectively as possible. So just bear with us, it's just a really busy time. But, you know, we are open to hearing anybody's comments and concerns. So please feel free to reach out if you have any questions. So we'll continue to update the community as this unfolds. But this is where we're at. Anything that I missed with that, that anybody can, would like to add? Nope? Okay. Mr. Grosso? Superintendent report?
I just want to, just do a quick advertisement for Matilda, which will be on February 29th through the 2nd, which is Thursday, Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM in a 1:00 PM Saturday matinee. This is a wonderful production based off of Roald Dahl's book. And this production has over 100 people collaborating throughout the district, which would involve teachers, crew advisors, parent volunteers, 30-plus student crew members and 50-plus cast members. It also includes students from North End, South End and the middle school. And that's grades 3 through 6. So I encourage everybody to go out and take a look. We heard earlier that tickets will be available at the door, but you can also book them with reserved seating at CGHS/booktix. That's it.
Is that on our website?
Yes.
So they can go on and purchase tickets right through the website?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So at this point, let's move on to some business. Can I have a motion for G1 through G9, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mr. Marzulla.
Yes.
Mr. Pala.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes, but abstain from G6.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under superintendent report, can I have a motion for H1 through H2?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mr. Marzulla.
Yes.
Mr. Pala.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes, but abstain from H2F, J and M.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under human resources, a motion for I1 through I9.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, there is some clarification on I7C. The original date that says 4/15, I think it was 4/15, I crossed it out. 4/15 should be 3/1. Please note that change on I7C. It should say 3/1 through 6/2024, please. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mr. Marzulla.
Yes.
Mr. Pala.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes.
Yes. And congratulations to Mr. Walsh on his retirement.
And under special services, a motion for J1 through J5.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mr. Marzulla.
Yes.
Mr. Pala.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. This time I open the portion of the meeting to public comment on anything on or off the agenda. We do have a couple of people have signed up, so I will go ahead and read our disclaimer. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Please preface your comments by stating your name, address, municipality of residence and group affiliation. Please be mindful of your statement length and keep each statement to a three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. Please direct all statements, questions or inquiries to the presiding officer and the presiding officer may interrupt, warn and/or terminate a participant's statement, question or inquiry if it is too lengthy or is abusive, obscene or may be defamatory. These rules may be waived if necessary to protect privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. Yeah. That's a mouthful. Mr. Martinelli, you are first on our list. Do we have, oh, I'm sorry. No podium tonight, I apologize.
John Martinelli, 30 Hillside Avenue. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I want to first appreciate the board for making it more transparent as far as the hiring process for the new superintendent. I just had a couple of questions that you could probably answer. With regards to the interview process, right? The state comes in, right, and has input. How much input do they carry in the final selection of a superintendent? I mean, I'm just trying to educate myself.
Yeah, it's okay.
Thank you.
Are you on?
The state has no input in the selection of a superintendent. What the state does have input in is the superintendent's contract.
Gotcha.
The county superintendent, who despite the name is actually an agent of the Department of Education, has to review and approve the contract.
Gotcha.
That's the only role they play in the process.
Oh, fair enough. Thank you. Thank you for that. Secondly, so I guess you have input from the people of Cedar Grove, you know, all the people who have families or whatever, kids that are in the school system. So I guess you guys are the actual, will actually select the new superintendent, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's good. All right. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Patel.
Hi, Janine Patel, 87 Stevens Avenue. So I'd like to say thank you for allowing my child to be part of the process of hiring new superintendent and having input. And thank you for keeping promises. And also, I'd like to say congratulations to the high school esports team for making it to the state finals, even though they couldn't compete. So I'm kind of hoping that Mr. DeDasco sticks it out and stays with the esports in the high school. You know, don't, you know, get disappointed now that, you know, we won, we couldn't go to state finals, but I hope he continues to do it next year. Right? That's what I'd like to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Is anybody else that would like to...
I got to get to two ladies.
That's okay.
Greg Albrecht, 2 Elmwood Road. I had a question. I attended some of the input sessions for the superintendent's election. And I wondered if I could turn that, one of the questions to you guys. It said, "What are some of the biggest challenges facing the Cedar Grove School District?" So I wondered, since you guys are making that choice, could you comment on some of the biggest challenges that you guys see facing in this decision, what you're looking for?
Right. So what Mr. Edelstein is saying, because we're in the middle of the process right now, that his recommendation is that we not comment on that.
Okay. This is off the record, though, right?
I appreciate you understanding that. Okay. At this point, I'll close this portion of the public meeting. Announcement of future meetings. The next meeting will be March 19th and it will be at the high school. Again, we will hear the goal updates from the high school principals. So at the same time, 7:30 will be the regular meeting. The following meeting will be April 30th and that will be at North End.
We adjourn to closed session.
Yes. At this time, I'm going to, we'll adjourn the meeting to, the board will be returning to closed session to discuss some contractual and personnel issues. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Have a good evening.